Did. I'm not sure. She didn't mention it. Oh, you can switch. You can switch.
Check, check, check.
Yeah, I would do that. I would do that. Yeah, do that. All right, we'll call to order the October 17th meeting of the Salina City Planning Commission. And the first item on the agenda is a presentation of 2017's landscaping awards. And so we'll turn it over to staff for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is Community Planning Month in October. And as an observance of that, each year we have had a combined award ceremony from the Tree Advisory Board and the City Planning Commission to recognize excellence in landscaping in the community. And today we have three awards to give out for projects. And they are in the categories of new development, redevelopment project, and a pace setter. And the Tree Advisory Board has selects each year a project that receives their Golden Leaf Award. I would at this time like to introduce, we have three members of the Tree Advisory Board here. We have Sidney Soderberg and Steve Blue, who is a member, and Ted Zurgur, all members of the Tree Advisory Board. We also have Brett Lamer here, who is the city forester. So the way that we're going to work this is we will give you some overview of the projects. And then we will ask those who are present to come forward to receive their plaques. And the city forester will present those plaques to the recipients. So our first project here is the Chick-fil-A Restaurant, which is at 2245 South Ninth Street in front of Central Mall. And planning commissioners may recall that in March of 2016, there was an application for final site plan approval that was filed for the outlot that is directly north of Chili's Restaurant and Bar. And the plan was to construct a Chick-fil-A Restaurant that was 4,900 square feet and had seating for 136 people indoors and outdoor seating as well. The building, the view you're seeing here is looking from Ninth Street. And the building is oriented from west to east with the main building entrance facing to the north and a secondary entrance facing Ninth Street. The restaurant has a drive-through window you see there on the south side. The building facade is made up of colored brick as well as red and tan exterior bricks. And then the facade has multiple elevations to give it architectural interest. So it's not just a flat presentation there. This particular property has frontage on Ninth Street, on the entrance road going into Central Mall, and then on the ring road. So it essentially has three front yards. And the green space that they set aside exceeds our minimum requirements by 10%. And they have provided over 11,000 square feet of front yard green space. It consists of 10 shade trees, 15 ornamental trees, and over 400 shrubs on the property. And they also have parking lot landscape islands. And their islands they provided exceed the city's minimum requirements by 45%. So they have gone over and above. And we think what's notable about this is the density of the shrubs that they used along South Ninth Street to provide a buffer between the site and South Ninth Street. And they've made very creative use of berms and planting beds in the green space along the entrance drive. And they've got plantings around the base of their sign as well, which is another unique feature. And then they've got very spacious landscape islands within and around their parking area. So we think the extensive onsite landscaping complements a very attractive building design. And these all blend together to make this one of the most attractive sites in the city of Salina. So in a way of recognition, we'd like to present the Golden Leaf Award to Sean Hubbard, who is the franchise owner. And Brett, if you'd like to present to him the Golden Leaf Award, we'd like to present that to Sean, who is the owner of the franchise here in Salina. Sean, I don't believe any of your... Sean, you don't have any designers or installers here, right? Just you. Okay, thank you. We did want to recognize Manley Land Design, who was the designer of this landscape plan. They're out of Alpharetta, Georgia. And Impact Landscaping out of Kansas City, Kansas, did the installation. But this really turned out quite well. The other category that we have here is redevelopment project. And the nominated project here is the Schooler Grain Company. And what they did is back in 2003 and 2004, you recall, we had a number of vacated school buildings. And the school district set up a process to review expression of interest forms from interested parties interested in acquiring and reusing the schools. And the very last school to find a new use was the Parsons School, which was built in 1962 out at Country Club Road and Holmes Road. And 2007, Schooler Grain was selected as the preferred purchaser and developer of the site. And so this was a site that was surrounded by residential on two sides. So they worked closely with the planning commission. And this was done through a planned commercial district, which was tailored to make this fit the site and the surrounding neighborhood. So in March of 2007, the planning commission recommended approval of Plan C1 zoning and approval of a site plan for this project. And that ordinance was adopted by the city commission. So this property is Plan C1 for office use. And as part of that project, they added new parking areas to the east and south of the building. And because we already had a pre-existing building, the focus was on screening the abutting parking lot from Holmes Road and from Country Club Road. And so the things that are notable here are the ornamental grass planting bed in front of the building and then the extensive screening hedge. And the screening hedge is really sets the standard for other businesses and properties. If you're looking at a definition for what the landscaping regulations mean by buffering a parking lot from adjoining public streets, this really exemplifies that. And so the other things that are notable here is the mature trees that were retained as a buffer with the nearby residential. And there's also been a voluntary planting of a number of trees on the site. And so they have gone over and above the city's landscape requirements. We think what they've done with the building and site has made a very attractive gateway into the city on Country Club Road. And the Tree Advisory Board and Planning Commission believe that those efforts are worthy of special recognition today. So I don't know if we have representatives of Schooler Grain here. If not, we do want to recognize landscape consultants who was involved in the installation and maintenance here. So you're here to represent them?
Yes, my name is Lauren Stroud.
So we have a plaque here to present to landscape consultants for their work on the installation. And they're also responsible for the high level of maintenance on this site. In our final category, we're referring to as a pace setter project. And this is really more of an infill project. And it actually dates back to 1996. This was one of the first sites that was done under the new landscaping regulations. And it was a fairly challenging site. And I would ask Dustin to go to our aerial photo here. But if you are familiar with the area bordered by Crawford and Roach, Prescott on the north and Ohio, essentially, if you look at this two-block area, the entire block is paved from curb line to curb line. There is no green space on any of these commercial properties. The lone exception to that is Dr. Shalas's office, which was redeveloped in 1996. And so essentially, what they did is they took this lot that was once covered with, similarly with asphalt as the rest of the block. And they removed all the asphalt. And what's notable here is that the entire front yard facing Lewis and the entire front yard facing Prescott between the building and the street is green space. And over 55% of the site that was 100% asphalt is now green space. The other thing is that this project has stood the test of time. It's 20 years in, and it still remains attractive and well-maintained. So we believe that Dr. Shalas is deserving of recognition for being a landscaping pace setter in this area. I believe we have his wife here?
Yeah.
Coworker, okay. So we'd like to present you a plaque for his efforts to bring some green space to this neighborhood. So Ray Klein with Klein Landscaping and Sprinklers was responsible for the installation at that time. Les Appleby was a local architect who was involved in the design. Les is now deceased, but we wanted to give him recognition for coming up with the design for this property. So with that, that would conclude our awards for 2017. And we'll make a transition here to our regular meeting.
And to those of you who came for the awards, thank you for being here. And to the tree board as well. So we'll go then to the consent agenda, approval of summary minutes for the October 3rd meeting.
Mr. Chairman, before we get into our regular agenda, we'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Lauren Driscoll to the planning commission.
That would be great.
She is the new department head for Community and Development Services. And we might ask her to come up to the podium and say a few words introducing herself and her background.
Yes, we're very interested to hear that. So thank you, Lauren, and welcome. Yes.
Well, it's nice to meet you all. I'm really happy to be here in Salina. My name's Lauren Driscoll. I'm originally from Michigan and graduated from Grand Valley State University with undergrad in public administration. And met a nice British young man who was an exchange student, decided to marry him. And he decided to become an American citizen and join our U.S. Army. So he joined the Army and that took us to Alaska, where I spent a little over 10 years as a planner and then the chief of long-range planning there. I'm also very active in the American Planning Association. I was the chapter president for Alaska for several years and was just elected to the National Board of Directors. So very active there, working on policy throughout our country and working with other communities on many different issues and was very involved in Alaska and its various communities. Happy to be here. This is my second week. There's lots to keep me busy. I've been in several meetings, just kind of learning and taking it all in. And just happy to meet you. If you have any questions, please feel free to call me, stop me. I live here right in town, so, and we're now looking for a house. So we're just happy to be here. I brought my family. I have a little six-year-old girl, and she's already in school. And we're just, we're just very happy to be here in Salina. It's just a great fit for us, so. Anything else?
Will you be at Thursday and Friday's meeting, planning meeting?
The conference? I am. In fact, I was even convinced to apply for the job because I know the Kansas chapter president and then the previous chapter president. So they said, oh, you gotta come to Kansas. And so that's actually one of the reasons I found out about the job. So I'm excited to go to the state conference and learn about some of the other things in the state. I've already started doing some research related, a few other things, and looking at Lawrence and Manhattan and neighboring towns. It's always nice to see examples, so.
And the city has begun paying you, I assume?
I'm assuming so, too.
So then we won't cross interrogate you or anything like that. Welcome, Lauren.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Glad to have you there. I look forward, some of us, to seeing you at the conference.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll begin then with the consent agenda for the approval of minutes. And I already sent notice to the staff, but I would like to add one item to the minutes in addition regarding the language plan, regarding planned commercial development last meeting. And the addition would be right in that section where that was discussed. That Chairman Norland noted that the draft language presented today and a draft substitute language, Section 2, would require PCD zoning in any property, not just future commercial center, neighborhood center, or gateway corridor. When those applications are under Part A, non-commercial to commercial zoning applications. So I would ask for that change with that, unless there are exceptions from the commission.
You have a place where you're asking Crystal to insert that?
Yes, and Dean, that was in an email to you and to Crystal right after the sentence, discussion followed regarding sentence structure of the possible substitute language for Section 2. So I hope it's appropriately placed.
And that's on page...
I don't have the minutes right in front of me. Crystal, do you know?
I'm missing page five in my package.
Oh, that would be on page five, Dean.
Okay. On page five at the bottom, it says, "A discussion followed regarding the sentence structure of the possible substitute language. Commissioner Norland, Commissioner Jackson suggested reworking the statements to avoid confusion."
Right, and that's right in the middle of the paragraph.
This is to reflect that although our intent was to limit the application to just commercial centers, neighborhood centers, and gateway corridors, that the way that staff had drafted the substitute language, you felt didn't reflect that intent?
Yeah, because of the numbering. It was a technical kind of thing, but...
And for your benefit, we had a further discussion of that this morning. And the city attorney has been tasked with coming up with foolproof language that reflects your intent and cannot be interpreted any other way.
That's great, okay. Yes, well, from us fools, we appreciate foolproof language, so, yeah, thank you. So if there are no objections...
So that should be a motion to amend the minutes or that or to approve the minutes with the amendment that Mr. Norland has suggested, so. So the motion is to approve the minutes as amended by Mr. Norland? Okay, with the change to page five.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign. Motion carries, thank you. So then to public hearing items, number 4.1, Application Z 17.6 filed by Salina City Planning, requesting approval of a text amendment to add indoor shooting ranges to the list of conditional uses allowed in the C3 Shopping Center District, C4 Central Business District, C5 Service Commercial District, C6 Heavy Commercial District, and C7 Highway Commercial District, and to the list of permitted uses as opposed to conditional uses in the I2 Light Industrial and in I3 Heavy Industrial Districts.
I would just, I think we've had discussions of this as a preliminary discussion item and gotten some feedback. And I know the question has been raised as to why the discussion of making shooting ranges a conditional use. And what we did was we looked at, and this has been a topic where if you look at it, most of the text amendments that have been done in this area, it was not unusual at all for communities not to have regulations for indoor fire ranges. Or if they did, they were rather vague. So there's a rich supply of text amendments that other cities had adopted. And to be honest, we could not find any community that allowed indoor shooting ranges as a permitted use in commercial districts. And part of that was a result of the special concerns that arise if you have a situation with a multi-tenant commercial building. Because it's very, very important that the building and the building walls have to be designed to accommodate the type of ammunition that is used within the confines. So the primary things that you have that relates to indoor shooting range that you don't have with other commercial uses is the impact of making sure that you have public safety concerns addressed and also the impact of noise. And so we have provided for you that OSHA does have some limitations on the decibel reading within an indoor shooting range. There's generally a requirement to use ear protection within that area. OSHA also has rules that apply to the ventilation of the area and exposure to airborne lead. We also found that some communities use the conditional use permit process to prevent shooting ranges from locating within 1,000 feet of a school or within 500 feet or 1,000 feet of a residential area. And then some other considerations that we have seen addressed, deal with hours of operation, limiting access by minors, and addressing whether the sale of alcoholic beverages is allowed. You have in your packet a sample of what we have seen in the way of performance standards. And I don't know if we have those in the packet, John. I think they're, the potential conditions are on the screen. But this is just a sample of what we found. And this was kind of a compilation from, we found about a dozen cities in the state of Minnesota that had adopted conditional use permit regulations for shooting ranges in the last two to three years. And this is kind of a range of the performance standards that they used. And so it addressed things like indoor ventilation, indoor sound levels, lead containment, the importance of having a design that can find all ammunition rounds within the building in a controlled manner, making sure that the ammunition used doesn't exceed the certified design, making sure that the firearms are stored safely on the premises when the business is closed, having a business plan and safety plan for the property, regulating how onsite construction is done, if there's a desire to monitor or limit the access to minors, and then addressing soundproofing if you are involved in a multi-tenant situation. So primarily, what I wanted to address and address any questions on was, our recommendation was that it was added as a, in the conditional use category in the commercial zones. And then the I2 and I3 district are generally more remote from close contact. And you tend not to have the multi-tenant buildings that you have in a commercial setting. So we were comfortable with that being a permitted use in I2 and I3. But it seemed to us in a shopping center setting or a central business district setting that maybe not every building or every premises may be suitable. And there may be an opportunity to put conditions on that might help ameliorate any potential impacts. So as we understood the guidance from the planning commission, we have drafted this, if you want to go back, John, to the summary. So the text amendment would be to add to the list of conditional uses in those commercial districts with shooting ranges indoor added to each of them. And then in the I2 and I3 district, adding those to the list of permitted uses. So we have attempted to capture the guidance and feedback we've received. So we'll stand for any questions you have about our reasoning.
Mr. S?
Are there any decibel limits outside of the building?
Not that I'm aware of. The idea is to, as we understand, some of the indoor range design guidelines, they generally call for some sound-absorbing panels to be placed within the shooting range, which helps. So the primary focus is on the decibel level within the shooting range. But that might be one of the reasons for treating it as a conditional use in the close quarters of a commercial district, if that is a matter of concern.
There was some language, I believe, in here that mentioned the sound level at the property line.
Inside?
Yeah. I can't find it now, but I know I was gonna make it up.
And Commissioner Z, I might ask you to pull the microphone close to you so that people can be... What's your commentary?
I think what we indicated was that we had found... I think what we indicated was that we had found that some communities use the conditional use permit process to limit the decibel rating at the property lines, which would extend it outside the building.
I see.
And then what is the definition of an experienced range operator?
That would usually be somebody that has been certified by a group, either a law enforcement agency, or one of the law, or a group like the National Rifle Association that demonstrate that they have competency in firearm instruction.
Dean, is there such a thing, I'm sorry, is there such a thing as certification for that, and is that, did you find research, I guess, on whether certification is a part of what's been required?
I did not. The only thing I'd seen was there's an extensive thing through, in some states, through the law enforcement agencies, and also through the National Rifle Association in terms of that certification. We do have a couple interested parties here who are interested in being range operators, and they would probably be in a better position to answer that question, whether that is something that is important or not important.
A question, please. Do people bring their own guns to these facilities, or do they use guns there, or is it both?
I think it's a combination, but again, we have some prospective operators here in the audience today. I think those types of questions are best addressed by the people who know, have a business plan, or a concept for operating the ranges.
Are there other questions for staff about conditions?
I wanted to add one concern. I think we can talk about conditions as we could, as you point out, Mr. Andrew, to hear from folks who are considering to be operators, and we want to hear from them. One thing that I wonder about, and I wasn't here for the initial discussion, July the 18th, but when I look at the descriptions generally of C-3 Shopping Center District, C-4 Central Business District, C-5 Service Commercial, those give me pause, even about having conditional permits for a shooting range, indoor shooting range, because at least in my experience, those are the more populated, more likely to occur. And we're talking now about conditional uses for all of those. The C-6 and C-7 Heavy Commercial, Highway Commercial seem less likely, but even in that case, we're looking at one that would be in a C-7 Commercial District, the one originally applied for, which is within feet of two restaurants in town. And I, so I just, I have a question in my mind about whether it's wise to, at least for those three, the C-3, C-4, C-5 categories, for there even to be a conditional use. But I'm...
The thought being, the conditional use process kind of serves two functions. One, it's used to filter appropriate from inappropriate locations, and the other aspect that conditional use permit allows, it allows for conditions or operating conditions to be placed on the property. So if you will recall, one of our most heavily regulated conditional uses to come lately was, we have conditional uses for the vape shop essentially, and also for the tattoo parlor. And so part of those is that the people who operate tattoo parlors, the state of Kansas does license them, they do have to be licensed, that's something that we confirm. We also set up some rules of operation, and then the other aspect of a conditional use permit is that a conditional use permit can be revoked if the operator does not operate responsibly. So if we have a state law that prohibits minors from getting tattoos without parental consent, and if a licensed operator consistently violates that, they could potentially lose their license, or they could have their conditional use permit to operate in a particular location revoked for failure to adhere to the conditions. So staff initially thought that C-4, the downtown area with the closed quarters, was not necessarily a good idea, but conceivably, you could have a basement area or a fairly large open area in a commercial building in downtown Salina that might be, turn out to be suitable for an indoor shooting range. So majority of planning commissioners felt that inherently a shooting range was a use of a commercial nature, and that it should be allowed to be applied for in any commercial zoning district. And so again, the, there may be certain circumstances or locations where it's just not appropriate, and that's where the conditional use permit comes in. We think that's less likely in our more isolated industrial areas.
Yeah, and as I said, I'm weighing that, but I appreciate that clarity. I hope that's helpful for the public as well. Any other comments from commissioners before we go to the public? Okay, hearing none. Members of the public, would you like to come to the microphone and state any input that you have?
I guess the primary question that we could, maybe the commission could address to the interested parties who are here, is whether there is some certification that a operator needs to have in order to legally operate a shooting range. It's not a question that staff can answer at this time, and whether that's been explored or not, but the, we do have two parties here at the meeting who are interested in being operators, and I, what we want to do is to draft something that would allow for and not inhibit the use that we're trying to accommodate, so...
Other comments, commissioners?
Yep, step up.
My name is Nathaniel Berg. I'm general counsel at JRI. We are the original applicant on this text amendment. We're at 621 Westport here in Salina, Kansas. There have been a couple questions that I can recall. The first was if there's a requirement to have some type of range safety officer certification to be able to legally operate one. I believe, at least as I understand the conditional use, that that is not a specific requirement for this permitting process. But there is reference on the conditional use, or the permitted use requirements that they satisfy, that the range satisfy, of various federal regulations. And those federal regulations do, A, include a limitation on exterior noise, and that is identified, if you see on number three there, it does say that. And that would be something we would have to have regardless of whether it was referenced here in these lists of requirements. The second issue that was talked about was the range safe, safety officer, range officer. There is a certification that the NRA provides that they created some time ago, because this exact question was coming up as cities were weighing what is necessary for a range to open. And so they've developed an accreditation program. We would have that, not, regardless of whether the city requires it, I think any range would have that, because that's generally a condition of obtaining insurance.
So if we substituted in that phrase, a certified rather than an experienced instructor, that would not make any difference to you?
That would not make any difference.
Yeah.
What is a typical procedure for someone that brings their own weapon or gun? Do they, you know, they park their car, and then they just carry it across the street if they happen to park far away, or do they drive up to the place and drop it off, or...
I guess I don't know what the typical customer would do. What we would provide is we would have locker space, but I would anticipate that obviously they would have to bring the gun in at some point in time, and store it in the locker. Or if they're not going to keep it in a locker at the site, they would then have to bring it in each time, they'd have to transport their weapon.
So I apologize if I wasn't paying close attention. Go ahead, excuse me.
Would you expect people to use their own guns, or guns you provide more frequently?
I would expect most people to use their own gun, but our anticipation would be that we would have a gun store located there as well. And so there absolutely would be guns for people who could rent to try out, to see if that gun is a good, a good fit for them.
Is it typical to serve alcohol in these places?
I don't believe it's typical to serve alcohol at one of these places. It would not be our anticipation to do so, although I am aware of other gun ranges attempting to and actually obtaining a license to serve alcohol.
So again, other communities have had similar restrictions, and that would not concern you if we had one like that? Okay. Mr. Berg, one thing I wondered about, I know you're considering one location, would you, do you anticipate if that would go through, you'd have more than one tenant, or would you be the sole tenant of the building?
We would, the building owner would have other activities that occur in the building. So I don't know if that meets the definition of separate tenants, but there would be different uses for the building. I don't know that there would be separate tenants as someone who's actually leasing land there, but there would be separate uses.
So do you anticipate, I mean, what, I guess I should put it this way, what safeguards would you anticipate for preventing any ammunition going through a wall?
Yeah, that's included within the federal regulations and the building code regarding what type of structure you have to be able to contain the rounds. And part of that was referenced before about maintaining a certain type of round, you're only going to be able to shoot a certain types of ammunition. The other is the wall has to, the walls have to be constructed in such a way to prevent that possibility.
And do you have to make, would you have to make provision or changes in the walls to accommodate that use?
Oh, yes, currently, yes, absolutely.
So when someone comes in with their gun and their own ammunition, I presume, how do you control that that's within the parameters of the building itself, the safety?
What's very common is that if you're going to rent a gun, you cannot bring your own ammunition, you have to use the ammunition provided. So that's one way to control that. I have seen other gun ranges do the same with people's own personal weapons, is that you have to use, provide ammunition that you purchase at the range. I don't believe that that would be our anticipation, and that would be what the range officer's job would be, is to make sure that that's not occurring.
Are there other questions for Mr. Berg? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Berg, appreciate your input.
Just one, one thing, again, and one of the advantages of the conditional use permit process is that the planning would be within your authority to ask the applicant to provide you the outlines or contents of their operation plan or safety plan, is how, what their plan is to ensure the safe operation of the range, to address those, those types of questions. And that would certainly be the hope that as the application and the proposal is fleshed out, that those operating would have a operating plan or safety plan to say, this is how we intend to operate the range, and ensure just those things, that if people bring their own firearm and their own ammunition, that it is not ammunition that exceeds the capacity of the range to contain it. Because that has to be an operational thing, it's not something that staff can regulate, it's not something that you can regulate. We would want to see the safety plan or the operation plan of the operator to explain how they would go about ensuring that that's the case.
Vanderbiltson Schilling Road has an archery range. Do they have any regulations?
They do not. There is, this refers to the use of firearms and not to bows and arrows. We have some city code that deals with outdoor archery, but it does not regulate indoor archery. Whether it's in a school phys ed class, or YMCA, or Vanderbilt's, there's, we don't have any regulation or land use category for that.
So Dean, I'm not just asking you, but any of the other commissioners, in looking through the potential conditions, is there any mention in that that I didn't see about, as you mentioned, a site plan being subject to an improved safety plan? Was that in any of those existing printed conditions?
All, all we were attempting to do here was just to provide you with a, a list of examples that we found from other communities of standards or operating limitations that we saw as conditions used and conditional use permits in other communities. So this, this is kind of a menu of available items, it's not intended to be a prescription. And so when you, when and if you get your first application, then that, that would be the time to try to structure those. And so item seven there kind of addresses that, but we can certainly, again, these are, these are not intended to be part of the ordinance or anything, they are just examples of performance standards or conditions we have seen utilized by other communities to ensure the safe operation of an indoor shooting range.
Commissioners, any feedback?
So the only actual text amendment that is being proposed for your consideration would be, John, if you go back to the summary of the zoning text changes. So none, none of that language there is, is proposed to be added to the code, it's just examples of sample conditions or operating standards that we have seen. But the only question before you is whether to add these uses to these land use categories.
So Dean, as I'm understanding you, then this would not be the time or place to actually approve potential conditions?
Correct.
Our only action would be for here.
Yeah, we can't have potential conditions because the land use of a shooting range indoors is not currently a listed land use anywhere in our zoning ordinance. Your decision today is whether it should be a permitted or conditional use. If you decide it should be a conditional use, then whoever wants to operate one in a commercial district would have to submit a conditional use permit application, and then at that time, you would have the discretion to adopt conditions that you think lead to the safe operation of the range. All we're trying to do is, is point out two things. One, we did not find any communities that did not require a conditional use permit for a range in a commercial district. And we just were giving you some sample language of operating standards or conditions that we saw associated with conditional use permits.
So I'm looking at the way we've handled, for example, text amendments for the planned commercial district that we've been looking at recently, and what was asked of the commission was for any input and feedback guidance about what those might look like. And while we're not approving those now, I think it might be helpful for the commission to give any feedback as to whether these conditions are the kind, are what we'd want to see.
I think that's the point, we're not approving those now. I don't see any problem with the wording as it is in this amendment at all. I, we talked about it, I, conditional and permitted uses are already specified, we understand the process. I think there's no reason to go into that part of it at this point.
I'd respectfully disagree. Well, so, the other commissioners can weigh in or not, whether it is the place or not. I think that these conditions seem reasonable, they've been investigated compared to other communities. I think one question that we should look at is whether or not shooting ranges would be allowed in a multi-tenant building, which are, are sometimes barred in other communities. in other communities. I'm willing to be convinced, and Mr. Berg has helped me think that through. I think it's time to at least give some guidance to staff about how that might be. And another one that is not included, but is really suggested, was mentioned here, that sale of alcoholic beverages would be prohibited. And I think that, and I can give the language if you'd like, that we, the city would specifically include in conditions, no sale of alcoholic beverages, and no substance impaired persons allowed on the premises. So that may be for another time, but that would be my input. And if anybody else has input, they will...
I agree it would be for another time. We're ready for the motion?
I'll move if we're ready for motion.
We're ready for motion.
I move that we recommend to the City Commission that the zoning text amendment be approved for the following reasons: that it is consistent with the intent and purpose of our zoning ordinance, it does not adversely affect the development of the City of Salina, and it will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or welfare of the City of Salina.
Okay.
A second?
Second. And I believe in the directions we have, that in the amendment, or in the motion should be that we recommend to the City Commission, what you have just stated, Commissioner?
I did take it directly from the statement that was advised.
Good. Okay. I wasn't sure I heard that right. That's good. And there was a second?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Both same side. And motion carries. Okay. Application 42Z17.8.
This is for Nathaniel's benefit and others in the audience. This is a recommendation, and it is currently scheduled that this would go before the City Commission on the 6th of November with your recommendation.
Okay. Okay. Application Z17.8 filed by the City Commission, Salina City Commission requesting change in zoning district classification from C6 heavy commercial to C5 service commercial on property legally described as lots 1 through 4, Block 1 of the CKS addition to the City of Salina, Saline County, and addressed to 1616 and 1640 West Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property that we're talking about is property that was formerly the site of the Rocket Drive-In Movie Theater, which was a fixture out on West Crawford. And that drive-in closed in the 1970s. At the time, it was brought into the city as a residential suburban holding zone when the city was rezoned and remapped in 1977. Part of the reason for that was that the property was not platted for development at that time. In 1980, Development Consultants Incorporated submitted applications to plat this property and rezone it from residential suburban to C6 heavy commercial. Planning staff has reviewed the reports and recommendations at the time, and the planning staff recommended that the property be rezoned to C5 instead of C6 because the C5 zoning was more consistent with the zoning and uses of nearby property. And applicants indicated that they had a problem with C5 zoning because there were a number of uses that would require approval, application and approval of a conditional use permit to allow. And this would provide a inconvenience and increase in time for the developer. The, some of the items discussed were lumber yards and mini warehouses. They are permitted in C6, but conditional uses in C5. So in a split vote, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the requested C6 zoning. And that zoning took effect in 1980. The property's been zoned C6 since that time. 1983, a building permit was issued for Super 8 Motel on the west 150 feet of the property. This motel has alternated between changing brands and being vacant and unoccupied. And it's difficult to know at any given point in time whether it is, in fact, operating. And so we, we've had some code enforcement action on that property when it was empty and not secured. And then two years later, 1985, the remainder of that property was purchased by Omaha Hotel Incorporated. They constructed a Holiday Inn Holodome Convention Center. And this property has remained C6 zoning since 1980 while undergoing a number of ownership and branding changes. The city's staff and development review team was contacted by a party interested in turning this property into an indoor mini storage facility and constructing additional mini storage units on the site. In reviewing the proposal, planning staff took note of the fact that the West Crawford is identified as a gateway corridor and an impact street in the comprehensive plan, and that under the current C6 zoning, mini storage would be permitted. Whereas under C5, it would be a conditional use, which must be reviewed on a case-by-case, location-by-location basis. So we felt because of the gateway and the impact street status that we should bring this item to the City Commission's attention. So that, they were aware that the distinction between C5 and C6 was discussed as far back as 1980, and that the planning staff had consistently felt that C5 was the most appropriate zoning classification for this property. The City Commission then took a vote and directed staff to initiate a zoning map amendment that would change the classification of this property to Cs, from C6 to C5, which would then require a conditional use permit application to develop a mini storage facility on the site. So we developed a application, and it was set for a public hearing today. We have notified the record owner of both properties. And your role today in this hearing is to determine whether you think C5 would be a more appropriate designation for this property than the current C6 designation. It's not the be-all, end-all, but we think it is instructive to read the intent and purpose statements of the two districts. The C6 district is designed for commercial uses, which deal with the sale and/or service of heavy equipment or products. Whereas the C5 district is designed for those businesses and commercial uses, which draw their customers from motors on a highway, or for whom a location on an arterial street is especially useful or necessary. So one of the things that C6 was designed or intended to accommodate would be sales lots or uses that involved heavier equipment, or things like agricultural implements, or road graders and bulldozers, or manufactured home sales lots. Those are items that are not permitted in C5, but are permitted in C6. And that's part of the reason why it's designated as heavy commercial. One of the things that we wanted to emphasize was that the C5 district allows hotels and motels just as the C6 district does. So it shouldn't make any difference to a hotel operator, whether their property is zoned C5 or C6. They certainly don't need C6 zoning to operate a hotel or restaurant, or many of the other uses. So as we point out on page five of the report, there's not much difference in setbacks, or building height, or lot coverage, or signage, or things like that. The primary distinctions between C6 and C5 are what uses are allowed by right in C6, but not in C5. So those include agricultural implement sales, amusement parks and skating rinks, animal hospitals, which would include hospitals for large animals, including livestock, automotive repair, including auto body shops, equipment sales and rental, including heavy equipment, lumber yards, mini warehouses, and manufactured home sales lots. Dog racing tracks, horse racing tracks, and warehouses are examples of conditional uses allowed in C6, but not in C5. So as we look at the suitability of the site for development or redevelopment, and John, I don't know if you could go to the zoning map for West Crawford? I may need to blow it up a little bit, but what you see is, as you move towards the interstate, you have the C7, which is the highway commercial designation, and then it is C5 as you work your way down to Broadway. And there's one lone property that sticks out that is not C5, and that's this property right here. And so in 1980, this is the map that the planning staff was looking at when it recommended that C5 would be a more suitable zoning classification for this property because it was more compatible with the existing zoning pattern. The other thing that we would point out is that we have a number of other hotels and motels and restaurants along this corridor. Those locations are zoned C5, or in this location over here, C7. And so C6 zoning is not needed to construct or operate a hotel on the site. Both of them allow a wide range of commercial uses, and we don't believe that C5 zoning would inhibit the future development or redevelopment of the site. But we do believe that based on the zoning pattern and surrounding uses, that C5 is a more suitable classification. If you look at the existing and the surrounding neighborhood, you don't find agricultural implement sales lots, or heavy equipment sales lots, or auto body repair, or manufactured home sales lots on this corridor. And that's because they're primarily not permitted, because all the rest of the zoning is C5 or C7. So this property is adjacent to C5 zoning on the west and south. And so we think if this were reclassified as C5, it would be more consistent and compatible with the zoning and uses of nearby property. Again, as we noted, the, if you look at the purpose statement of C5, that statement is more consistent with the development pattern along West Crawford than the purpose statement of C6. And there may be what we identified as uses in C6 that would not be compatible with that development pattern, and might not be desirable on an important gateway into the community. So we look at, at public utilities and services, and they are adequate to address any form of commercial development or redevelopment on this property. Crawford Street is a major arterial street. It carries over 15,000 vehicles a day. It has four travel lanes, but no center turn lanes. There was restricted access that was dedicated as part of the plat on this property. We don't think a zoning change would have any impact on existing or future traffic patterns or traffic volumes on Crawford. And so that brings us to the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan shows this portion of West Crawford as being part of a commercial land use area. Both C5 and C6 are, are identified as potential zoning districts in this land use category. So going to C5 would be consistent with the land use plan for this corridor. I did want to point out that the City of Salina has existing standards that apply to site layout, site landscaping, transitions from commercial to residential. What it does not have presently is any building design standards or aesthetic standards for new buildings in our conventional zoning districts. As part of their action, directing staff to initiate a zoning map amendment application to reclassify this property, the City Commission also directed staff to initiate a zoning text amendment to create a West Crawford Street Gateway overlay district extending from I-135 to Broadway. So we are working to develop an outline and content for that overlay, and identifying a legal description that that district would cover. But what we would anticipate is that the overlay district would address design standards for new development and redevelopment, much of which we have been discussing, such as the orientation of buildings, the location of buildings, the location of parking, exterior appearance and materials of buildings. That is a work that is to come. So today's discussion is primarily to focus on the land uses. And so on page eight of your report, we have given you a summary of possible findings. And finding one is West Crawford Street is identified as a gateway corridor and impact street in the comprehensive plan. This corridor is predominantly zoned C5, and the subject property is adjacent to C5 zoned property on two sides. A change in zoning classification to C5 would be more compatible with existing zoning and uses in this corridor than the current C6 classification. A number of uses allowed in C6 are not appropriate for a major gateway into the community. The C5 district allows hotels and motels as a permitted use. So that change should not in any way impair the property owner's right to continue to use and operate their property. This zoning change would not make the property non-conforming in any way. Change to C5 would not affect public utilities or traffic flow. And C5 is a potential district in the commercial land use category, so that would conform with the future land use plan for this corridor. So alternative one would be to reclassify this property, to recommend that it go from C6 to C5. You could recommend that consideration of the application be postponed to allow the applicant or staff to provide additional information, or you could recommend that the C6 zoning remain in place. Our recommendation is alternative number one. We did provide alternative two there, just because we always do, but we wanted to note that we think that the elimination of inappropriate or incompatible uses and the development of site design standards would be best addressed in the overlay district in this instance, and that a planned commercial district would not serve that purpose. The overlay is a better tool for that, if that's an item of concern. So today's hearing is to consider whether C6 heavy commercial or C5 service commercial, whether you believe C5 is the more appropriate zoning classification.
Okay. Commissioners, are there questions for staff?
Overlay district would essentially be a Plan C5, though, wouldn't it?
Essentially. But it, what it would have is, if you'll recall, in our North Ohio overlay, we use the base zoning district to set the allowance for uses and for a number of things. What the overlay district does is it has additional standards as to the setback of buildings, the setback of parking, the orientation of the building, the building materials facing the gateway street. Those are the types of things that we would anticipate in overlay to include.
Well, I could see C5 with the addition of an overlay district in the very near future.
Other questions for, from commissioners for staff? Hearing none. We would open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come and address it?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Joshua Joseph, and I'm the said properties proprietor. On Crawford Street, I not only owned this, I used to also own the Bay Mountain and the American, so mostly all the hotels in Crawford Street. I sold last year the Bay Mountain, American Inn, and this property was also sold, but I got it back. So when, when I got it back last year, the reason it didn't work was it was a convention hotel, and it, it was built from many years back. And as old age takes toll of, of properties, thus the same thing happened to this property where many millions would not bring it back to its old glory days. And so the new, new convention center has been built and newer hotels. So basically, all the business kind of has gone from this hotel to other hotels. So I've seen many, I live in Dallas, Texas. I brought my design architect, who, who did some designing for me. I brought our contractor, who also is with us. So in March, I decided to go to the city and propose, because I've seen many nice storage, mini storages coming up everywhere. So I decided to propose somewhere around March, April, about my idea, instead of a hotel, since it has all this space and it's lying simply, why don't we convert it into a mini storage and add in the front because of the great access to Crawford? We said, let's build a strip center at the front. So it basically covers the whole back. And then build in the back some, few more storages and convert the hotel, which at least $2, $3 million will be put back into the hotel because that's the best use. Otherwise, the only thing is it'll stay abandoned if I close it down. Or, and, you know, with all those houses and trailer parks around it, it, you know, we always used to have the problem of people throwing stones and hitting it and breaking glasses and just continuously fixing it and, and having problems. So that was where I came up, the best use went to banks, and they were willing to, you know, they have, it's, it was a better idea to get $2, $3 million and fix this into a mini storage and a strip center in the front. I have the drawing. So we went to the city. We took our plan. This is what we have idea. So they told us, hey, you're already, you can do storage, you can do strip center because you're already zoned for it. So we agreed. I went back, started my plans, drawing the plans and things like that, spent 40, 50,000 to the architect and to the contractor, started getting things done, come back to the city to show our progress, and then the next thing we hear, they were yes and no. And then next thing we hear, the city calls the Salina News and talks bad about the property. So there was an article, suddenly, all of a sudden, saying, oh, the property is trying to go as a store, mini storage, and it's a bad property and all those things. Totally unnecessary from, from the city planning, talking about the hotel to the city for which, you know, I think it was just to bring publicity to the city to say no to what we're doing. And then we get phone calls to, you know, to our friend, our staff, saying, hey, you guys are closing down, you guys are building a storage building. The city says they'll never allow you all to do another, you know, storage, so they're going to do a zoning change. And then we come to know, we get a letter about a plan, they want to do a zoning change, which if you see on your agenda, the next agenda is to move this to C five and then not to allow storages into C five. I just want to, I think that was pretty bad of the city, you know, to agree, make us spend money, give us a hope, and then go back with somebody who have vendetta against us, suddenly to go back and tell, oh, no, let's change the zoning, out of nowhere. Man, they're saying they decided in 1980 when the hotel was built. And now, suddenly, out of nowhere, they're saying, oh, we, at 1980, we had told the, the person who was building, we may do it at C five. I think, I think that is totally unnecessary. I think with, with the old place, I have some pictures. If I get your permission, I would like to show it to you. I think it'll be much more better. The existing building will look much better. The strip center will cover everything behind it, and even the behind will is going to be brand new. This is how the, the strip center is going to look in the front, which is going to, basically, with good colors, good landscaping, everything that the property doesn't have is going to get. And, and then the storage will be behind it, which will be covered anyway. And it's still the same, it's same, the same building, just few storages according to the plans, which is going to be submitted to the city if they, you know, if, if we don't have to go through all this process, we already have the plans and everything ready to submit because now they won't take our submit since they said plans because they said they have to go through this process of changing the zoning. And then it'll become a conditional use where we'll be allowed or not allowed. If I'm not allowed to do this, the property stays like that. Sooner or later, I have to close it down. It becomes a nuisance for the city. If I'm allowed to do this, I'll spend more money into the city, beautify that area, and it'll only bless, be more, it'll be a more blessing to the city. And, you know, as a business owner, it may, it may be more profitable to me to run something, you know, with such a huge building, will have no other use for. And if the city allows, I was wanting to take plans like, you know, because we have the big convention center and all that. If they allow, I could even beautify it where I could make a skating rink inside it or, you know, multi-use. But if they don't want and just have a strip center and, and the storage building inside because the rooms are already there, we'll be gutting out all the rooms and just putting storage doors on all those rooms. So it'll be a climate control, and very few people, you know, only when somebody needs a storage goes in and out. So I think you should leave it as C six, and, and since it is a permitted use, we can submit our plans and, and hopefully beautify the property more and not go through all this process because right now, we're not planning, no ugly culture, no. If you're spending another more money, more money into it, you're going to have a nice fronts where you'll have different good, good retail stores or restaurant, whatever, coming into these fronts. So I would beg the city to leave it as it is and the city to relook at our plans and then see that it's not going to get worse, it's only going to get much better. If I leave it like this, it's going to just get worse. So I would recommend you not take the decision to move from C six to C five. Thank you so much.
I had one question. Am I understanding you correctly, Mr. Johnson, that, and this was just at the tail end of your presentation, in the design, did you say that you're anticipating there would be space in the front in that, as depicted there, for retail shops and storage in back? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. So if you see the, the building, and if you see the front of it is all vacant parking lot. So basically, it's going to, it's going to have on both sides.
Use this laser pointer.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm, I'm not a public speaker, so I'm just trying to make it. Yeah.
The retail will be here in time.
So this is how the retail is going to look. On here, this, this is the one whole block of maybe five or six retail, and then this side, five or six. So basically, other than the entrance, the whole thing, the whole back is covered. Can you show the other picture? Yeah. So this is how, on, on both sides of it, it's going to be, you know, one whole retail with four or five storefronts where different people can lease it. Same thing on the other side. So it could be a restaurant, it could be any type of stores who can lease it because of Crawford. And then, so everything behind it, if they think that a storage will look ugly, you won't even see a storage, other than this, you know, a good storage sign.
So if I'm seeing and interpreting correctly, the front of those, there are seven spaces approximately, and eight on the other side. That's, there would be seven on one side of the drive, eight on the other side of retail spaces, yes?
Yes.
And how deep do you anticipate those retail spaces being?
It's about 47 feet. Forty-seven. Forty-seven feet. So it'll be a good space for a lot of, not huge retailers, but enough retail. But at the same time, we still have plenty of space to drive around in the back, you know. It's going to be all fire access and everything. Even if drive around, it will be all easy. Basically, we, we may add some storages here in these parking that is there and in the, in the parking space and, and then have this retail. So there is, you know, and then convert inside, the rooms are going to be converted into storage spaces. So I think it's going to be a much better use of this property and, and the convention space and things like that. And that will enable us to put a few man, if, if I try to sell this property at this point, I don't think anybody will buy it for any good value use. You know, it's only going to become more junk whoever comes and buys it for any other purpose. At this way, we, we've got a nice retail in the front, and, and a good fencing will be all around it because it's a secure storage space. Somebody is going to be inside the property, in, you know, in the property, always monitoring. There'll be gate access because it's a storage, there's, you know, much security and, and limited access only to people who have rented a storage space. So I think in the long run, this is, will be the best use for this property.
So one other quick question. The, the plans, as you presented them here with the retail space in front, was that what you initially presented to the city?
Yes.
And they said they accepted, and then later to your, by your consent rejected?
From the first.
The retail, you haven't presented them.
Yeah.
At the last meeting, I have with it.
At the last meeting, when we, we got a chance for Avi to come to the planners and meet, so that's when he showed them, this is what we are doing, because that's when we finish our initial building of the whole plan.
Okay, okay. So what you're saying is that initially, you weren't going to build the retail. You were just going to have a storage facility converting the hotel to storage units.
Yeah.
Then you decided to build this in front of it.
Yes.
Later, after?
Yeah, the first.
The news article?
Yes, the fir, no, the first time we call on March, I called to see what is the best use of this property. Can I make it a storage, self-storage? And so I was said, yes. And afterwards, when we came with the plans to the city, we already had the plans to do the, the retail and everything because that was what our initial drawing because I, you know, maybe the city didn't get it, maybe they thought I'll be putting all in the front across, maybe they thought I'll be putting storages which would have looked bad. But the economic sense for me made it where if I put good retail stores, since it is in a, it's in a good, you know, road where a lot of people come and go, it made more sense to have a good economy, good retail stores and the behind of it, so that'll be hidden. But I'm sure the city did not see these plans, but when we already, when we brought, brought it to the planning commission, they had, they had looked at it, but they had all, they said that they're going to go through the zoning process.
Sir, we are the planning commission, and I've never seen any plans for this project.
What, when PNC?
I was the chairman until recently, and.
So maybe you were not there in the last one?
No, I was there.
I think you may be referring, I think you may be referring to staff. And I see Mr. Schreig, who is there, and Mr. Schreig, would you like to clarify?
As a little bit of clarification, I'm Mike Skreg, the deputy city manager, and, and one of my roles is to chair the development review team, which is a staff team that meets with outside parties. And so on September 11th, the city commission took action to initiate rezoning of this property. On September 13th, the development review team met with Mr. Joseph's representative. They then showed us these plans, and at that time, we advised them of the status of the initiated rezoning and the impact that that would have. So we, we were very clear in that DRT meeting that in light of the downzoning that had been initiated, we would not be able to issue a building permit for the project that they presented to us until that zoning was resolved. And the, the likely outcome would be that it would be a conditional use permit. Not that it couldn't be approved, but it would be subject to the, the conditional use permit review and approval process, which includes your review and approval and the city commission review and approval. So I would agree that if asked prior to that, and I can't speak to the conversations that they might have had with staff, but if asked previously, the correct answer would be in that zoning category, mini storage would be permissible. However, at the time that we met with them in DRT, the downzoning had been initiated, and we made that very clear in our conversations, that that then changed the, the status of the project, and it will, could not be approved as, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Greg. Other questions?
A question. I'm wondering, with the old building there that would become a storage, it has windows and so on, what would happen to the windows and the exterior of that building?
We will take, yeah, since our architect will work with the city to do whatever, but if you see, most storages have windows outside because the inside, they'll see, you know, the doors will be basically grills that shows that it's a storage. So there, it'll be lighted and the usual process, and those, those windows are on the side of the building, which, it's not in the front of the building. It's, it's on, on these sides, but the windows are not, it's just a hallway. It's not really a room window. This whole side is an extra, after the hallway where people walk, there is a, there's rooms, and then you have a hallway, and then you have the window, the, the glass windows. So basically, there's nothing going to be done to that because inside that is the rooms where the building, the rooms are going to be turned into storages inside also.
So is it accurate to restate what you're saying, that the front would remain unchanged, but the windows and the rooms in the sides would be grilled, if I understand?
Yes.
Bars of some kind?
No bars will be there, but the, you know, inside the windows after the hallway, basically, if this is the hallway, if this is the window, then you have the hallway and you are the rooms. And each room has a door to enter it. So those doors will come out and, you know, it'll be the, just like on, you'll see the small storage units, it'll be the.
Sliding door.
Slide, yeah, sliding or lifting and putting up and putting down the doors. But none of, the building will be like it is. Only change here is the rooms inside will have a change, and then there will be extra storage in the parking lot and in the front. And the gates will be basically right here and here to enter the building, but the entrance is, is going to continue, stay where it is, and basically, they're all going to go, the property is going to have the retail stores where people just go and come out. Anybody who has access only will be allowed behind this building, behind this area, who have access, who have bought a storage space, and they'll, with, with a key access, they'll be allowed to go back.
Other questions?
If that's the case, then how will the businesses?
If that's the case, then how will the businesses receive deliveries?
In, in the front?
From the front?
Yeah. The storages...
All your retail stuff is delivered on front now, like down Santa Fe and all that, all your packages come into the front door. We don't have the alleys anymore.
The entrance is still going to be there, and you have parking here, you have parking here on the sides, and you have, like, what is it? Almost thirty, thirty-five feet of space where people park and then walk into this building. So you have plenty of space for any type of shipping, or any big trucks to also come here for storage. Like, if you think those eighteen-wheelers are coming, there's no, this is just small storage units for indoor storage. And same thing outdoors, so the big things, other than regular trucks, nothing big is going to be coming past it. But whatever is coming, it has plenty of drive-through access. And so, you know, where fire trucks can be circulated, it has all the spaces. It's not like really congested, it has its space.
It seems to me there are a lot of questions we can't answer, or even ask here.
I agree. And I think we're really supposed to be focusing on land use.
Yeah.
And we, of course, have a comprehensive plan, and a land use plan, and various feelings and beliefs about overlays, and the actual change of how businesses would look in that entire strip. So none of those things are compatible with what we're seeing or hearing. And I don't know, if the city commission initiated this, then perhaps it needs to be sent back to them. Can we do that? Can we send it back to them?
Well, all you're being asked to do is make your recommendation. Whatever your recommendation is, will go to them, and they'll ultimately decide. I just wanted to point out that what is transpiring here today...
Is a design review?
Well, it's essentially, we're almost as if we are conducting a public hearing on a conditional use permit without actually having an application.
Exactly.
Because what is transpiring right now is something that would normally occur in a conditional use permit application, where the applicant would be outlining their plans and answering questions, so...
My fear is that by asking questions and asking him to answer, we are doing exactly that, and establishing some kind of parameters for future use of this property, which we are not doing now.
Which should not occur.
Yeah.
Which should not occur.
Yeah.
Now, what you have is, you have scenario A, that if the zoning classification of this property were changed to C5, then that would require for a change to a mini storage facility, neighboring property owner notification of the proposed change in use, and a public hearing before the planning commission, where you would review the plans for the conditional use. That's the C5 model currently. Under the current C6 zoning, if that is left in place, there would be no notification or public hearing of the proposed change in use of the property, and the review of the plans would be done administratively by staff. And so that, that is the primary distinction. And so the, I, we discussed this matter with the city commission without predetermining anything. They wanted to pursue the change to C5, because as they looked at the map of this corridor, they thought that C5 seemed to be the predominant pattern. So that is one option, to recommend a change to C5. The other option is, as we have outlined for you, is to recommend to maintain that no change in the status quo with C6 zoning. Regardless of what recommendation you make, this item will go before the city commission for a final decision, but you are the public hearing body, and it's your role to hear from the affected property owner. Not only was this property owner, but also the owners within 200 feet of this property were notified. I only received feedback from one of them, and they indicated that their only concern was they didn't want to see the character of West Crawford change from what it is today, where it is a service corridor catering to travelers on I-135, and also within the community. So that was their expressed concern, that they didn't want to see the corridor change from the character that it has today, in terms of uses.
I have one to reply to his comment. The reason we are even here is because I brought the proposal to change this building into a, into a storage, mini storage and retail site. So I think it was important for me to bring these things to you, because there was, there were, before then that, there was no intention to change it from a C6 to C5. And because I brought a request, or I was going to submit plans to build this, this whole process came. So I think if you want to change it to C6, with the conditional approval of my plans, they can still change it to C6. I have no problem with that. But I think since, now I feel vulnerable that, yeah, I can't take any plans to the city and tell an idea upfront, because if I don't do it right away, and just talk to the city about my plans down the road, they're going to turn it around later down the road, and, and use my knowledge to come against me. And that's what happened here. And I hope, if for any reason you want to change it, I think I have to be approved, and then change it to C6 or C5, I still don't have a problem. But I would like the property to be improved to what I like to do. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Wally, you had something? Well, to go, to change downzone it to C5, which would be approved for your shopping center thing, plus you could convert the hotel into mini storage. Is that what we'd want to do, is to change it down to a C5?
The city commission initiated that application to, John, if you want to go to the zoning map again?
Right.
So this is the parcel right here, it's C6, all the rest of this corridor is C5. The city commission initiated this application to change this from its current C6 to its current C5, or to a C5 designation. And what we tried to outline for you is uses that are presently permitted under C6 zoning that are not permitted in C5 zoning. So you could review those uses and see if any of them gave you pause as far as an as-of-right use of this property. Because as it was and operated as a hotel, whether it was C6 or C5, didn't really matter in that context. If there's a change in the use or the pattern, we at least wanted to bring this to the city commissions and planning commissions' attention, that there is a distinction between C6 and C5. We've tried to outline what that distinction is. And if it's C6, then agricultural implement sales, amusement parks, animal hospitals, automotive repair, heavy equipment sales and rental, lumber yards, mini warehouses, and manufactured home sales lots are permitted by right if it's zone C6. Those uses are not permitted by right if they're, if it's zone C5.
Are we ready for a motion?
And that's the primary distinction we're trying to bring before you.
Okay, is there further discussion or motion?
I move that the planning commission recommends approval of the rezoning of this property from C6, heavy commercial to C5, service commercial.
I second it. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Aye.
And motion carries with one exception. All right. So we'll move to number four point three.
Again, just for everyone's benefit, the way the schedule is presently set up, this is a recommendation, and your recommendation will go to the city commission on the 6th of November for their final decision.
Okay, we'll move to application Z-17-9, filed by city planning commission, requesting approval of amendment of section 42-332 and 42-333 of the C6 Heavy Commercial District Regulation by removing mini warehouses from the list of permitted uses in section 42-332 of the C6 District Regulations, and adding mini warehouses to the list of conditional uses in section 42-333 of C6 District Regulations. In short, making mini warehouses permitted to a conditional use in C6.
And we apologize as a planning staff for our ignorance, or my ignorance, but at first, we were honestly caught off-guard by the fact that mini warehouses were a permitted use in C6, because in my lifetime, there's never been a mini storage facility developed in a C6 property. So when we researched it, we determined that the mini storage warehouse is only, the only commercial district it's permitted in is in the C6 district. So we don't have the table for you here graphically, but on page one of your Z-17-9 report, we've kind of put a little matrix there on that first page. And in that matrix, we've listed for you the categories of not allowed, permitted, and conditional use. So this is on page one of your staff report for this item. And so what you see is in the C1 district, mini storage is not allowed, C2, it's not allowed, C3, it's conditional, and C4, it's not allowed, C5, it's conditional, and C6, it's permitted. And so C6 is kind of the outlier there. And we have had expressed to us as a staff that it, a belief that it is not necessarily appropriate to use the gateway entrances into the community as locations for mini warehouse complexes, or at the least, there should be a conditional use permit review. So what we have here, and we may have to, I don't know if we can blow it up a little, John, but what...
We don't have that, right?
What?
We don't have this.
You do have this.
I do.
Yes, it's attached to the report.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
It looks like this, and it is attached to your, your report here, but we're putting it on the screen for your benefit. And so one of the things that's, planning staff was tasked to do was to look through and determine where we had many self-storage in gateway locations. And so our gateway location one, we have is across from St. John's Military School on South, on North 9th, and that is zone C6, and it was a permitted, not a conditional use. On, at 706 North Ohio, that's a gateway near the overpass, and that is zoned I-2, and that's why it's there, because that's a permitted use. We have it at 404 North 9th, along the North 9th Street leading into downtown, that's there because it's zoned I-2. At 401 North Santa Fe, near Pine, that is kind of a gateway into downtown, that's there because it's I-2. In the case of the South 9th corridor, across from Long MacArthur Ford, is a Broadway mini storage facility that was approved by the planning commission through a planned commercial district, and it is in a gateway, but it's not a run-of-the-mill mini storage facility. The planning commission put a number of conditions on it. On Beverly Drive and on Clark, the planning commission reviewed and approved the plans for those mini storage facilities. Those are not gateways into the community. Citywide south storage at North and North Ohio Street, again, that's a function of the property being industrial. And maybe we can't do a lot about industrial properties we have along our gateways, but we can address the commercial. So what you're seeing there is that we had seven mini warehouses, complexes that we found that were in commercial zoning districts. Six of those were approved through the conditional use permit review process, or planned commercial zoning review. And the seventh location across from St. John's Military School was not. So kind of related to the discussion that we had before, if, if it's a view that perhaps mini warehouse facilities are not always appropriate along the city's gateway corridors, and we do have some C6 zoning along our gateway corridors, is it more appropriate to use the conditional use permit process consistently in those districts? So for us, it would make sense to treat them uniformly in C3, C5, and C6, that they'd be conditional in all commercial zones. So we discussed that with you at an earlier meeting, and you authorized this to come forward to you for you to discuss, and we said we would put together a report in summary, and that's what we've done. So the majority of mini warehouse complexes are in industrially zoned areas, but we do have seven in commercial areas. We do have some in gateways, and there's a view in some quarters that that's not, that prime frontage gateway locations, that there's better, more suited locations for mini storage facilities than on the gateway. So what we're suggesting is that we require conditional use permits in C3 and C5, and from a zoning administration standpoint, it makes sense to us to treat them uniformly in the commercial zones. And it was, we apologize, but it was somewhat of a surprise to us that we had a commercial district that allowed them as-of-right, because we not had occasion to review one.
Questions for staff?
So again, your options would be to recommend that they be moved from the permitted use list to the conditional use list as drafted and presented by staff, or if you want, and I don't, I think the conditional use permit process is, is an appropriate filter. It doesn't make sense to us completely to disallow them in commercial districts, but that's what the conditional use permit process is designed to do, is to filter out inappropriate or appropriate locations.
What's the difference between planned commercial and... And what? And conditional use, yes.
A conditional use, that is a use that's listed, but you cannot go out and obtain a building permit just to build it by right. So for example, a church is a conditional use in a residential district. So if you have a residential subdivision, and somebody wants to construct a church there, depending on the scale of the church, the height of the church, the location, the number of parking spaces, how it's arranged, it may or may not fit within that residential neighborhood. So the conditional use permit allows the planning commission to review that, and it also... also allows you to place conditions such as screening or height limits or things of that nature. So it is, it is a use that is allowed by right, but you are exercising discretion on either to allow it or disallow it. And the difference is, if we get a building permit and we have a set of plans and the use is permitted by right, we have very limited discretion to put any conditions on how that is developed or how it operates, whereas you have discretion to attach conditions to your approval that might deal with hours of operation, or limit lighting, or limit the number of access points, or prohibit access on a particular street and allow it on another, or require screening, or limit the height of a building, those types of things. So a lot of the discretion is the same, it's just that a planned commercial is for a very specific purpose, dealing with, only with commercial development, whereas a conditional use covers a broader range of things. We have residential conditional uses, we have commercial conditional uses, and we have things like automotive salvage yards that are conditional uses only in industrial districts. So it allows you to determine that, whether the location is suitable for that use, and it also allows you to attach conditions to your approval if you want to limit lighting or require screening, or those types of things.
Okay. Other questions for staff?
Is there public?
This being an administrative item and a public hearing, if there's any member of the public who would wish to comment, now would be the time. And seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Commission. Further discussion, motion?
I guess we're ready for a motion.
We are.
So, just so you can see is, and we have this in your packet, and John had it scrolled up, but basically, today, mini-warehouses are listed in the permitted-use list. That would be struck, and then the list of conditional uses in C-6 would read this way with mini-warehouses added. And then if you want to scroll, John, we've already reflected your recommendation related to shooting ranges. So if you were to recommend that this become a conditional use in C-6, then you would have added two uses to the conditional use list, which would be shooting ranges in item 4.1 and mini-warehouses in item 4.3. If you don't feel that any change to the current status quo is necessary, then option three there, declining to recommend approval of the text amendment, is another option.
I would make a motion because I feel that this is just a continuance of what we've been attempting to do in terms of realigning zoning to conform as well as uses in those zoning areas. So I think it's important that we continue the work and that we do what we have set out to do. So given that, I move that we recommend to the City Commission that the zoning text amendment be approved for the following reasons. The amendment is consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. It will not adversely affect the orderly development of the City of Salina, and it will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the City of Salina.
It's been moved, seconded?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, and motion carries. All right. So we're looking at administrative items. There are none listed. Staff, any other administrative items?
We do have Ms. Singleton in the audience, and I guess we would see if she has, she just here for curiosity, or if she had anything she wanted to bring up.
I have just had some more pictures of the other copies of that other issue.
Okay. For the benefit of the Planning Commission, we have conducted a final inspection of the Salina Ortho Properties at 523 South Santa Fe. We've inspected the landscaping and the parking and all the outside attributes of that, and they have passed their inspection and qualify for a certificate of occupancy, but for getting their grass germinated and established. But they are, they have moved from the Medical Arts Building into this building because they have a certificate of occupancy. And so the photos that you have, those are still about the fence or trees or?
The audience.
Singleton, I'm sorry. For purposes of public, would you mind coming to the microphone and just coming?
I didn't even know that this was going to be brought up today.
Well, we're not trying to bring it up, we're just trying to give you an opportunity, if you want, to bring something up under other matters, so.
It's just, these pictures, and if y'all want to just flip through them, it'll save me from being so nervous talking, but it's, it may be up for occupancy.
How about if you give those to city staff as opposed to the condition, or the commission?
The occupancy for them may be, but not for 543 South Santa Fe. It's not.
And your concern about these photographs are still about the fence, or?
It's, um, that, those taken, the first one, I don't know, it's even dramatically worse than it's currently.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that we.
I think that's something that's best addressed between staff and Ms. Singleton.
Right. If you, for purposes of public understanding, if we have a matter that really isn't part of the commission business and needs to be worked out with staff, we'll go on from that matter.
The water issue, though, the sewer line, the water line, they could.
So to staff, are there any other preliminary discussion items?
We have no preliminary discussion items. We do have, as for your benefit, we are, the city attorney is working to finalize the public hearing draft language for the planned commercial district text amendment that we have discussed, and there's a number of things that he's trying to clean up and clarify. That is scheduled to be discussed again at your November 7th meeting. And the, we have had an application again filed for what we'll refer to as the Popeyes Site on South Ohio, an amended application from the one that was withdrawn. And so we believe that that may be scheduled for your November 21st meeting. And then just for those of you who have registered for the Kansas Planning Conference that will begin on Thursday morning, there is a Thursday evening reception at the Marymount Building, and then there will be, the Planning Commissioner track has mostly, emphasis is on Friday, and so what they've tried to do is they have a special training block for planning commissioners that Mr. Jim Cowp is going to present. And then I noticed, or Mr. Neal and I noticed, that our session is recommended for planning commissioners, but you can decide whether it's worth your while or not, but we're going to talk about the historical ebb and flow of cooperation between the city and the county.
Should be fascinating. Okay.
So that's all we have for you this evening.
Are there any other matters from commissioners to come forward to the Commission? If not, I would declare us adjourned. Thank you very much, Commissioners.